Good evening, everyone. We would like to call the order. Our Monday, Fayetteville City Council meeting, August 23rd. At this time, we would go to Councilmember Larry Wright for the invocation, following which, if we could stand and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Wright?
Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we come to you this evening first to simply say thank you. We ask you to lead us and guide us in this meeting that will make decisions that will impact the citizens of this great city. God, we pray that you would help us, that we all work together, because together we're better. We're going through this pandemic, Lord, many are falling sick, there are many in hospitals and homes across the land. God, we pray that your protective power will get us through this together. Those that are sick, help them to recover. For those that are not sick, help us to wear our masks, to do the things that are safe, protect those that we love and we care about, and the citizens that's next door. Help our neighbors, help one another. Bless us, God, as we go through this very trying time in this world, God, that will make history. And God, when we look back on these times, that we could say we did all we could do to stay safe, to get through this together. And we thank you, in the precious name of your son, we pray, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for us.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. At this time, we'll have announcements and recognition. We will have Mr. Scott Bullard to give us a COVID update. Mr. Bullard, how are you, sir?
I'm good, sir. I hope everyone's doing well. Good evening, council. Mayor Pro Tem and everyone listening to us. Making this a little easier here. This is day 526, for those that are counting. No end in sight, but we march and trudge on. Someone asked me today, quite frankly, what does good look like? Okay, to throw vaccinations in there. I would offer you Orange County, North Carolina. Their percent positive day is 3.7%, but they're 80% vaccinated. Cumberland County is 54% vaccinated in 15.6%. Positive, or percentage of positive of all the tests. Not drawing a hard comparison, but that's what we've been saying all along. The closer we get to that high herd immunity vaccination number is where we want to be. I believe we have eight more days left in the last executive order that the governor gave us. There's a lot of discussion now about what's next, but what I would offer you, and this is just something for us to continue to think about, today is a hallmark day with school starting back. So between today and in two weeks from now with Labor Day, we can kind of reflect back what 4th of July represented and hope that people will try to do some of the right things so that we don't continue this drift upward. And that's what my fingers are crossed about. I'm still pushing vaccines to anybody that will listen to me. And with that being said, I'll be subject to any questions or comments that you want to make.
Thank you, Mr. Bullard. I don't really have a question, but always get an update from Mr. Nagowski and his team at the Cape Fear Valley Health Systems. The high on last year at the peak of this, I think, was between 113 and 115 inpatients. Today, the tech reflected 140 here, and if they count all of their locations, 174 inpatients. So our healthcare system is certainly under pressure. The numbers are trending fast in the wrong direction, so I appreciate that. Mr. Bullard, I know many, you know, have become exhausted and maybe even numb to hearing these updates, but it's important to know that this is still very real and it's impacting our community in a real way. And with that, on last Friday, very reluctantly, but with the, at the guidance of our health system as well as the school system leadership, or at least the superintendent to implement a mask mandate, that I hope you all will work with us to kind of slow the spread of this deadly variant. So any questions for Mr. Bullard? Or Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bullard, are you familiar with the testing protocol?
Yes, ma'am, to some degree, I am.
Okay. Are you aware of, there's some discussions going on right now about what the tests are picking up? So what delineates COVID from COVID-19? Are you familiar with that aspect of the testing?
I'm not familiar enough to really pass judgment on it as say somebody from the Health Department would. I mean, we've seen and read some things in the popular press, but I wouldn't want to comment. I'd reserve that for Dr. Green.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, what I'd ask is if we could potentially get an update from Dr. Green, because one of the things that we're beginning to hear is that the test is not distinguished between some types of SARS, so for, as example, influenza versus what many are seeing as the deadly variant of COVID-19. And I'd be interested in knowing what the testing is revealing in that regard. So if we could potentially get an update from the Health Department, that'd be ideal.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. I will reach out to Dr. Green, see if she can come and update us on, and maybe answer some of those more technical questions. Mr. Bullard?
Let me take that a little further. We, as a city, meaning city staff, have actually had kind of a sidebar, we'll call it, with some of the Health Department staff, just to do a touch point to make sure that we, the city, are doing everything possible, from how we work with them on contact tracing, how we quarantine folks, how we follow up. And in talking with Dr. Green and her staff, there's literally nothing else we can do, and that even includes the two vaccination clinics we held on Thursday and Friday of last week. So at least from a preventive or at least a response situation, we are where we want to be. We just can't go around randomly putting shots in people's arms.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Councilmember Waddell. Any other questions for Mr. Bullard? All right, just as a closing remark, we encourage all of you who are joining us today, please encourage family members, friends, grandchildren, nieces, nephews to get vaccinated. The statistics speak for themselves. Orange County, 80% vaccination rate, 3% positive rate on the test results. Cumberland County, a little over 50%, almost 16% positive. So dramatic difference that that could make if we moved our total number of vaccinated citizens up. So please encourage people to do that. And, Mr. Bullard, thank you. Hopefully, next time you speak to us, the numbers reflect a different story, but thank you. Fingers crossed. At this time, we would like to acknowledge the Women's Equality Day. I have prepared a proclamation, and so I would like to read that at this time. It says, "Women's Equality Day commemorates the ratification of the 19th Amendment, which secured women's right to vote, whereas it is a way to honor women for their leadership in the community and to their families. And whereas the American women of every race, class, ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and the strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas the city of Fayetteville celebrates the passion and unwavering dedication of women who struggle and preserve the fight for suffrage, and we recognize the countless ways that women strengthen the fabric of this nation. Whereas at every level of society, women are leaders at the forefront of progress, tearing down barriers and shattering glass ceilings, just as they've done since the founding of the nation. Now therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor, the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the 26th day of August 2021 as a day to recognize women's equality in our all-American city, and urge all residents to learn more about women's equality and the passage of the 19th Amendment in 1920." So congratulations to all the women on our colleagues, as well as those in our community and our country that have contributed so much. So thank you for that. I'd like to acknowledge that. We'll pass that on. I think that was a request by Mayor Pro Tem in her absence from the meeting tonight. With that, I'll go for a couple of quick announcements to Councilmember Larry Wright, followed by Councilmember DJ Here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have an announcement reference to P-95 mask. My ministry, Heal the Land Outreach Ministry, has been in contact with the Fanpole and also the Ford Foundation. Today, we've given out 50,000 masks here in the city of Fayetteville in Cumberland County. We have 20,000 masks from the Ford Foundation, and I've just received 6,000 more masks, and these are N-95 masks. And we're getting more in, also sanitation, hand wipes, and also the sanitation hand wash. And we're getting cases of those in. So if anybody wants masks, schools, family members, churches, contact me through email at healthelandministries@alwell.com. We'll set up a time for you to come by the church and pick up as many masks as you want, or you can call 433-1992, and they'll set up a schedule with me as well, and we'll set up something so you can get these masks. We have to be safe out here. We have the masks, and we want to get them out to as many people as desire to have them.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Councilmember Here?
Thanks, Mayor. This morning, I had the opportunity to visit a few schools this morning with Dr. Connolly, and the conversation that I continued to hear with our parents were people speeding by buses. And even in the news today, before coming to our meeting tonight, I saw many little bites of people just about, oh, my heart beat just about to hit a child. So everyone, today is the first day of school, and school is back. And we pray that our children will be safe. And a lot of times, I'm asked, some folk ask me, well, what if there's not a medium? Is this, if, the safest thing, if the bus stop, if the bus stops and the flag is out, stop. I think that's just a safe way, instead of trying to decipher what's the right way and what side of the street you want. Let's just help keep our children safe, and we pray that they have a successful season, kindergarten to 12th, and also our college students. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just very briefly would like to take a moment and wish my mother, Carolyn Hodge, a very happy birthday. Today is her birthday, and it would be, it would just be such a tragedy if I didn't take a moment to just publicly tell the woman who birthed me, happy birthday.
Thank you. Happy birthday to your mom as well. With that being said, I'll move to item 5.0, City Manager's Report.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. To the report that was given by Mr. Bullard, I'd also like to have Assistant City Manager, Chief Financial Officer. There's two items that I'd like to speak about briefly, and if you look at the administrative reports, the first one's going to be 10.01, the Small Local Business Enterprise Program Update, and then the second one will be 10.02, the Automation of the Petition Process. So with 10.01, per city council, city council created the Fayetteville Small Local Business Enterprise Program, and what that is, is the city looks to have 40% of its total spend be spent locally. So for last fiscal year, the city spent 21.76% locally, which was the first time since 2018 that we did not meet that 40% goal. In more positive news, though, when you look at the subcontractor spend, we were able to increase on the ethnicity type for Native Americans and African Americans, and for all of our P-CARD expenditures last year, we were able to keep that local target over 40%. So with that, any questions about that report?
No questions. I know, Mr. Tolan, I think the city manager told us that this will come back for more detailed discussion in a work session so that we can spend a little bit more time drilling into it at our next one.
Absolutely. And also, too, as you know, we're in the beginning processes of our disparity study, which will definitely cement this process for us going forward.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Next is the Automation of the Petition Process for Speed Humps. So currently, a citizen, if they want to have a speed hump in their neighborhood, they would contact our Traffic Services Department, and so all that's going to stay the same. If the, if the city department deems that the speed hump is necessary or applicable, the change in the process comes where currently all the petitions are gathered by hand, where on September 7th, we'll have a process that it can either be by hand, a hybrid process, which is hand and electronic, or strictly electronic. And so just to kind of give a brief overview of that, you know, I live on Morganton Road, so you would have a Morganton Road, you'd go, the citizen would go to the website, you'd have a Morganton Road, maybe a Hay Street, and all the open cases for speed humps, and the citizen can select that on our website and then fill it out electronically, and it'd be the same steps as if they were doing it by hand. So that was the update that we wanted to provide council on that.
All right. Thank you, sir. Sounds good. Council, we'll move to item 6.0, is the approval of the agenda. Councilmember Dawkins?
Yes, sir. I move to add an item to the agenda for a Budget Ordinance Amendment and Capitol Project Ordinance Amendment for Pay Funeral Home.
So you look to make that item 7.016?
No, sir. She looks to...
Oh, to add it? So we'll take the first action to add it? Okay. Don't need to specify the number?
Three.
Okay. All right. All right. So there's a motion by Councilmember Dawkins, seconded by Councilmember Here, to add an agenda item. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember...
Green.
Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, is that unanimous?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda with the addition of Consent Item 7.016, Budget Ordinance Amendment 2022-1, and Capitol Project Ordinance Amendment 2022-29, which would be concerning the Pay Funeral Home.
There's a motion by Councilmember Dawkins to add item specified, is seconded by Councilmember Here. Any discussion on the motion? Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
Okay. Motion carries. Item 7.0, Consent, Councilmember Kinston?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I request, I'm requesting to pull P-21-44 for a public hearing on September 27th at our regular meeting.
So is your motion, your motion to approve with the exception of that item?
Yes, sir.
All right. So it's a motion by Councilmember Kinston to approve the consent with the exception of item 7.02. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? Council, I'll look to you for your votes to approve consent as follows?
Green.
All right. Motion carries. Item 8.0, evidentiary hearings, will be read by Mr. Freeman, Juan Valdez, and other aliases. Mr. Valdez, how are you?
Good, sir. How are you all? Mayor, members of the council, Torres, Frimplanning's on and Division Manager. Tonight, we have two special use permits cases that will be presented by the applicants with actions to be taken by the city council. All individuals wishing to speak as witness should have signed up before the start of the meeting. Is there anyone to speak that needs to sign up? We currently have only one person sign up for this particular case. Madam Clerk, could you swear the applicant in, please?
Yes, sir. Raise your backhand. Raise your backhand to the Bible. Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Anyone speaking with the hearing must provide competent material, substantial evidence to the city council under oath. Anyone planning on speaking during this evidentiary hearing, please stand up and be sworn in, which we have done, and the city clerk will swear or affirm the testimony that is being given to be true. Next, we have Jennifer Baptiste, Senior Planner, who will present our first SUP case of the evening.
Good evening. This is case number SUP 21-04. The owners of the property are Mary Demetrios, Paula Lawson, and Katina Demetrios airs. The application is being represented tonight by John Banter Solo of JNB Commercial Properties. The request is for a special use permit to reduce the 500-foot distance separation between a bar nightclub and a religious institution in the Community Commercial Zoning District. The property is located at 901 through 907 Bragg Boulevard and totals 0.69 acres and is in current, is in District 2, and staff is recommending approval. As you can see from the subject property map, the property is located south of Bragg Boulevard, just to the, just to the west of MLK Junior Freeway and to the east of Ames Street. According to the zoning district map, this area alone, Bragg Boulevard, is all zone community commercial. One piece of property that is associated with this SUP is currently zoned as MR5 and is in a residential area. This roadway to the rear of the property is a platted but undeveloped roadway. According to the land use map, this area should be developed as a, as commercial strip redevelopment. Commercial strip redevelopment is defined by the land use plan as a commercial mixed-use area that encourage high-density development. The subject property is currently a commercial strip center with various uses. 901 Bragg is currently vacant. 903 is currently being used as a fabric and upholstery shop. 905 through 907 Bragg Boulevard is a bar nightclub that is proposed to be closed once the, once the, if this SUP is granted, but to the applicant. The request is to reduce the 500-foot separation between the proposed religious institution that would occupy this building and a bar nightclub located to the north across Bragg The surrounding properties to the north is a bar nightclub located to, across Bragg Boulevard. To the south is a residential district. To the east is, are various commercial uses, and to the west are various commercial uses, which is another shopping center, which also has a religious institution that is currently located at the end of this building. As you can see from the survey provided by the applicant, they are requesting a reduction in the 500-foot distance separation to 185 feet. From this corner of the, where the religious institution would be located, to secrets across Bragg Boulevard to the north is approximately 185 feet. According to the development standards in the UDO, Section 30-4(c)(3)(g), religious institutions are required to be at least 500 linear feet from any adult entertainment uses and/or bar nightclubs and similar establishments. So the applicant is asking for a reduction from 500 feet to 185 feet in order to locate their use in the building. The recommendation is to approve the requested SUP to reduce the distance separation in a community commercial zoning district. The general consistency statement for the approval should include, "The amendment is consistent with applicable plans because the city's unified development ordinance supports residential institutions in the CC district. The uses surrounding this property are a mix of commercial uses which are compatible with the proposed SUP, and the proposed SUP is reasonable and in the public's interest because the proposed zoning fits the character of the overall area." We do, that concludes my presentation. I asked, staff asked that, do you reserve any questions until you open the public hearing? We do have one, one person representing the application who is also available for questions. Thank you.
I'm John Banter Solis. I live at 6304 White Hall Drive in Fayetteville. I'm a commercial realist... Oh, sorry.
You need to, no, you need to open the public hearing.
We'll open the public hearing. Please proceed, sir.
Sorry. That's right. John Banter Solis, 6304 White Hall Drive in Fayetteville. I'm a commercial real estate broker representing the seller of this property, 901 to 907 Bragg Boulevard. I was told I need to go over these findings of facts with you. The special use complies with all applicable standards in Section 30-4(c), use specific standards. Currently, the UDO identifies the standards below for religious institutions. Religious institutions shall be located at least 500 linear feet from any adult entertainment use and/or bars, nightclubs, or similar establishments. Religious institutions in the AR, SF-15, SF-10, or SF-6 districts that include a school or sanctuary with a capacity of 800 persons or more shall obtain a special use permit in accordance with Section 30-2(c)(7). Special use is compatible with the charact- in the five, the five hundred foot distance separation to one hundred and eighty-five feet. From this corner of the pro- uh where the religious institution would be located to secrets across Bragg Boulevard to the north is approximately a hundred and eighty-five feet. According to the development standards in the UDO, section thirty dash four point C point three point G, religious institutions are required to be at least five hundred linear feet from any adult entertainment uses and/or bar nightclubs and similar establishments. So the applicant is asking for a reduction from five hundred feet to a hundred and eighty-five feet in order to locate their use in the building. The recommendation is to approve the requested SUP to reduce the distance separation in a commu- community commercial zoning district. The general consistency statement for the approval should include, "The amendment is consistent with applicable plans because the city's unified development ordinance supports residential institutions in the CC's district. The uses surrounding this property are a mix of commercial uses which are compatible with the proposed SUP, and the proposed SUP is reasonable and in the public's interest because the proposed zoning fits the character of the overall area." We do, um, that concludes my presentation. I asked, staff asked that, do you reserve any questions until you open the public hearing? We do have one at, one person representing the application who is also available for, um, questions. Thank you.
I'm John Ban Solis. I live at sixty-three oh four Whitehall Drive in Fayetteville. I'm a commercial realist. Oh, sorry.
Uh, you need to, now you need to open the public hearing.
We'll open the public hearing. Please proceed, sir.
Sorry. That's right. John Ban Solis, sixty-three oh four Whitehall Drive in Fayetteville. I'm a commercial real estate broker representing the seller of this property, nine oh one to nine oh seven Bragg Boulevard. I was told I need to go over these findings of facts with you. Uh, the special use complies with all applicable standards in section thirty dash four C, use specific standards. Currently, the UDO identifies the standards below for religious institutions. Religious institutions shall be located at least five hundred linear feet from any adult entertainment use and/or bars, nightclubs, or similar establishments. Religious institutions in the AR, SF fifteen, SF ten, or SF six districts that include a school or sanctuary with a capacity of eight hundred persons or more shall obtain a special use permit in accordance with section thirty dash two C seven. The special use is compatible with the character of surrounding lands, and the use is permitted in the zoning district of surrounding lands. The application states the religious establishment is compatible with all surrounding uses, retail, and entertainment. The special use avoids significant adverse impact on surrounding lands regarding service delivery, parking, loading, odors, noise, glare, and vibration. The applicant attests to there will be no adverse impacts on surrounding lands. Special use is configured to minimize adverse effects, including visual impacts on the proposed use of adjacent lands. The applicant states the building will not be significantly altered and no visual impact upon adjacent lands. Special use avoids significant deterioration of water and air resources, wildlife habitats, scenic resources, and other natural resources. The religious institution is a very benign use, which will not affect deterioration of water and air resources, wildlife habit- habitats, scenic resources, and any other natural resources in the vicinity. The special use maintains safe ingress and egress onto the site and safe road conditions around the site. Currently, the site has three driveways for access from Bragg Boulevard. The special use allows for the perfect, protection of property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop the uses permitted in the zoning district. The applicant states that the neighborhood is already fully developed, and the special use will not adversely affect property values. The special use complies with all of the relevant city, state, and federal laws and regulations, as depicted on the site plan you already saw for the proposed development. The use for which the special use permit is requested complies with all use regulations and development cities, standards of the city of Fayetteville. The applicant will be required to meet all applicable standards. Any questions for me?
Uh, we'll, we'll save them till after we close the public hearing. That, that's it for now.
All right, thank you.
Madam Clerk, any other speakers?
No, s- no, sir. We have no further speakers.
All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, any questions for staff or the applicant? Uh, Councilman Dawkins?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the special use permit to allow a religious institution to reduce the required five hundred feet distance separation between a bar nightclub and a religious institution from five hundred feet to a hundred and eighty-five feet, as indicated by the supplied site plan subject to all other conditions identified in and conforming to the current UDO standards as presented by staff based on the standards of the city's development code and the evidence presented during this hearing, and that the application is consistent with applicable plans because the development is located in a community commercial zoning district, and that this use complies with the findings listed, and the proposed permit is in the public interest because the proposed SUP does fit with the character of the area. If approved, the special use permit shall become effective ten days after its approval by the city council, which is September the second, twenty twenty-one. The SUP shall expire one year from its effective date if a building permit is not issued within that time. For this motion to approve, all findings of fact must be met, as Mr. Ban Solis read all eight findings of fact. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's my motion.
All right. It's a motion by Councilmember Dawkins to approve, as seconded by Councilmember Davis. Just, okay, discussion on the motion. I think I have Councilmember Whitehead, and then I'll go to you.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, just to reiterate very briefly for the listening audience, and to make sure that I understand accurately, this is the church asking for the special use permit, not the bar. So a church is asking to be located in closer proximity to a bar and not the other way around.
Thank you, ma'am, for the clarity. Councilmember, uh, Hare?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I was gonna somewhat ask the same thing, but if I could ask the city attorney, uh, I, I know how we got to the distance, um, between religious institutions and, and commercial properties that, uh, and you know the, the range of what they include. How does that change within the, the, the ordinance? Is it, is what we're requi- or what's being requested a standalone and, well, you know what I mean, it's just a standalone item for this particular item, and it doesn't change the, the five hundred feet distance for all other, uh, properties that sit in that type of, uh?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Mm-hmm. All right. It's a motion on the floor by Councilmember Dawkins, seconded by Councilmember Davis. We've had discussion on the motion. Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Those who vote in favor of the motion, hands. Uh, Councilman?
Green.
All right. Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Mr. Valdez is back.
Yes. So now we have one other special use permit case that will be presented by staff, Mr. Craig Harmon, Planner Two. The applicant with action to be taken by the city council. All individuals wishing to speak as witnesses should have signed up before the start of the meeting. Is there anyone wishing to speak that, that needs to sign up? And I think all our gentlemen here have signed up to speak. Anyone speaking at the hearing must provide competent materials, substantial evidence to the city council under oath. Anyone planning on speaking during the evidentiary hearing, please stand up and be sworn in by the city clerk to swear or affirm that the testimony you plan to give is true. Next, we'll have the staff presentation. Then afterwards, we'll have the applicants give testimony, and those, any tho- any parties wish to oppose the, the request. Mr. Harmon?
Thank you, sir. So the next case we have before you is a request of an existing funeral home to operate a crematory in a, uh, on a property zone limited commercial. This is at six-six five-one Rayford Road. This is Lafayette Funeral Home. Uh, Mr. Dale Crawford is representing the, uh, the funeral home, but the owner is here as well. Both have signed up to speak. Uh, this property is in Councilman Wright's district, and just to give you an idea of where it's located, uh, this is Strickland Bridge Road. This is Rayford Road. Uh, across here is the Walmart, um, grocery store. I believe this is Starbucks here, right in front of, uh, their property. And, uh, their property, their funeral home's been there for quite a number of years. They're looking at doing expansion, you'll see in a minute, which would include the crematory. Current zoning on the property, uh, they own this chunk of property here, which is about two and a half acres. Uh, the funeral home sits on this. There, they have, uh, parking on this portion of their property, and, uh, they plan on putting just kind of a little driveway that goes across here, not really using the rest of this that's still zoned, uh, residentially. Our, uh, land use plan calls for neighborhood mixed use, which is, does fall into that type of category. Uh, this is, these are the plans that have been submitted so far. So this is the, well, here's Rayford Road, here's the existing funeral home, and this would be the addition, uh, immediately behind the existing funeral home. Um, this addition, of course, would include the crematory that we're here for tonight. The crematory itself will be more than three hundred feet from any residential structure. Um, you have a gas station, commercial property, uh, here to the, uh, east, and then to the west is a light industrial, uh, paint and body shop. Uh, this, uh, particular schematic shows you the landscaping that will put in, be put in as part of this, uh, addition. Um, so you'll have buffering put in on the sides and, uh, back here to the rear, uh, buffering it from the residential properties on the sides, and then some more landscaping, as you can see, uh, here toward the front, and some here around some of the other, uh, drive aisles, uh, and then islands as well in their parking areas. And then this is just, uh, an elevation of what it will look like, um, when this is complete. So this is the subject property currently. This is the front of the funeral home from Rayford Road, and this is the back of the funeral home. Uh, again, this addition would connect to the back of this building up in this area. This is the paint and body shop, uh, beside of it, this zoned light industrial. Again, to the north is a Starbucks. Um, to the south of this property, uh, is a residential street. Again, to the west, the, uh, auto body shop, a caliper collision, and then a, uh, Circle K, uh, to the east, a fairly large one. Uh, zoning commission and staff recommend approval, or zoning, I'm sorry, zoning commission didn't see this. Um, gotten used to that over the years. Um, but these are the, uh, eight findings that must be met, uh, for your approval, and if you would hold any questions or comments for staff until after you conduct the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Mr. Crawford, how are you?
I'm doing very well. Mayor, how are you?
Good to see you. So please, uh, state your name and address for the record.
Sure.
Let me open the public hearing. There you go.
Dale Crawford, Crawford Design Company, uh, one sixteen North Cool Spring Street in Fayetteville. And, uh, first of all, I very much appreciate, uh, allowing, uh, to speak tonight. Uh, I am representing, uh, Lafayette Funeral Home. And, uh, just to give you a little background on what they will be putting in, and this information is from, Matthews Environmental Services, which is the company that actually be installing, uh, the equipment and then, uh, the purchase. Um, been in business fifty-two years, uh, all, all equipments, of course, UL certified. They, so far, they have a hundred and sixteen installations in North Carolina. They have about forty-five hundred worldwide. So they've been in business a long time, uh, and all. Uh, they, uh, the funeral home anticipates about two hundred, uh, cremations a year, which is only about three hundred hours, which is about three percent of the, of the entire year. So, uh, the facility will only be used, in essence, about three percent of the entire year. So it will not be used, uh, that much. And then, uh, as far as any kind of noise and all, it's equivalent to buy a, uh, HVAC unit, so it not be a, you know, a very loud unit. Everything will be internal to the building, and, uh, of course, the building is located internal to the site. Uh, and then, uh, with that, I'll certainly answer any questions you have, and, um, Rick is, uh, here also to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we'll catch the questions after we close the public hearing.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, any other speakers?
Yes, sir. Our second speaker is Mr. Rick Will Hyde.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. My name's Rick Will Hyde. I'm at six-six-five-one Rayford Road in Fayetteville, two-eight-three-oh-four.
Does it have any, oh, uh, so he, he kinda summed it up, huh?
He kinda summed it up. I'm here for support and to answer any questions.
All right.
That might come about.
All right. With that being said, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, Counsel, I'll look to you. Any questions or comments, uh, for staff or, uh, the speakers?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Councilman Wright?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the special use permit to allow the crematory to be operated on the site with the existing funeral home as indicated by the attached site plan subject to all the other conditions identified, and conforming to the current UDO standards as presented by staff based upon the standards of the city's development code and the evidence presented during this hearing, and that the applicant is consistent with applicable claims because, number one, the development is located in a limited commercial zone district. Number two, that this use applies or complies with the findings listed, and number three, the proposed permit is in the public's interest because the proposed SUP does fit with the character of the area, and it meets all the eight findings of facts.
All right. It's a motion by Councilmember Wright to approve, as seconded by Councilmember Hare. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Kinston?
Do they have to state that they meet the findings of facts before we?
Um, he, I think he said that they met it. Uh, you saying if he has to read each finding of fact, that's a legal question. My law license expired not too long ago.
You let it expire?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna take care of that, too.
I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember Kinston, I, I thought that the motion incorporated the eight findings of fact, which...
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. So if, if a motion by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Councilmember Hare, any further discussion on the motion? All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes to approve. Council, Councilmember Whitehead?
Green.
All right. Motion carries, unanimous. Thank you all. Good luck to you. All right. Public hearing. Individuals desiring to speak at the public hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before seven PM this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed to each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement, a single spokesperson is designated, in which case the single spokesperson may use the entire fifteen minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, uh, please step to the podium, clearly, clearly state your name and address for the record. The light changes from green to amber means you have thirty seconds remaining. At the end of your allotted time, uh, you will be notified. This time, we'll go to, uh, how are you, sir?
Mayor, member of council, this is an annexation public hearing tonight for an area that you heard about quite a while back. It's referred to as, uh, the Commons in Aaron Lakes West. The application was turned in by, uh, some folks from Larry King and Associates, but the owner is Mr. George Armstrong. They turned it in on his behalf. Uh, it is to annex nine point nine-six acres, um, which will be part of a proposed subdivision to be known as the Commons in Aaron Lakes West, um, related to a zoning case you had on your consent agenda. Uh, located west of Bingham Drive at the end of West Fork Drive. Um, this map shows you the location. Let's see if I can point out Bingham Drive along here. Um, just off the edge is Lake Ridge Drive running down this way, and West Fork runs down like this. The proposed subdivision will be in this area, partially already in the city, is shaded in yellow, and part of it is in, uh, an area that was formerly in an area designated for annexation by Hope Mills. You might remember, we presented this to you back in April, and, um, you agreed to amend that annexation agreement. Uh, went to Hope Mills. They did the same in June, and so finally, it's back here for this annexation public hearing. A few more landmarks, Fisher Road like this. Um, some pieces of Hope Mills are outlined here in black, and this area shaded in purple is all in Hope Mills now. But the blue indicates an area that was designated for, uh, annexation by the town of Hope Mills. Uh, it's the Hope Mills MIA, but this has now been changed to a Fayetteville area that can be annexed. Just a little shot of the, um, looking into the area from one vantage point, I believe, along Fisher Road, a couple of surrounding landmarks, uh, service station near the corner of Fisher Road and Bingham Drive, and a couple of homes, I think, again, on Fisher Road, uh, way down- And a couple of homes, I think, again, on Fisher Road, uh, way down south of the area. Uh, this map here shows you the overall layout of the proposed subdivision. Um, many of the lots, there's 38 lots in total. However, land down here below this solid red line is not yet in the city, and that's what they've asked us you to annex. There's 16 lots in that area. So the area of developed would have eventually 16 single-family homes, um, 38 in the entire subdivision. West Fork Drive runs, goes off the edge of the map up here to Lake Ridge, and this would be the way into the area right here. And then you'd come down on one street being in the annexed, proposed annexed area. This is our legal description map we always prepare. So a couple of considerations. Is this area contiguous? Yes. Is it owned by the persons who signed the petition? Yes. And can our departments and PWC provide services? Yes. And we've already gone through the designation. So we have, like, in your agenda packet, of course, a whole lot more information on this area. There are four options outlined in there. Uh, basically, here they are. We're recommending, um, that you annex the area tonight after you have your, uh, public hearing. And that would be based on the following, that it is sufficient, the petition, it meets the standards for a contiguous area. City and PWC can provide services, and the budget impact should be positive, especially a couple of years on into the development of the property.
Thank you, Mr. Nash. With that, we will open the public hearing. Uh, Madam Clerk, we have any speakers?
Yes, ma'am. We just have one speaker, Ms. Laurie Epler.
She join us by phone? Oh.
Okay, we have no further speakers.
Alright, and that will close the public hearing. Uh, Councilman Davis?
One second, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you please, the council, I'd like to make a motion that the city council moves to adopt the proposed ordinance annexing the area effective August 23rd, 2021, and establish the initial zoning consistent with prior action on the zoning.
Alright, uh, you want to repeat that?
Yes, sir. For the viewing audience, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, um, to ask the council to move to adopt proposed ordinance annexing the area effective August 23rd, 2021, and establish the initial zoning consistent with the prior action on the zoning case.
Thank you, sir. And as a motion by Councilmember Davis to approve, uh, the following that was presented. There's a second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? Alright, Counsel, I look to you for your votes, those voting to approve. Councilmember Waddell and Ingram?
Green. Green.
Alright, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Uh, Counsel, motion to adjourn? So move.